Chance, we're ready at the lectern. There we go.
Welcome, everyone. I, Councilmember Tola Martz, call the March 19th, 2024 City Council Services Safety and Parks Committee to order. And first up on that, always rise to that I don't have my agenda open in front of me, even though I've been doing this for 15. First up is general public comment. So there are multiple comment opportunities at tonight's meeting. There is a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you can make comments after presentation in council question and answer period on each of tonight's agenda items. Members of the public may address council at this time, in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. If you are joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand. If you're on a phone, press star three. If joined by computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon. This varies by device. One option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raise hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. If you're in the room and did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion. I'll wait for a moment to see if anyone raises their hand. Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak or indicated a desire to speak this evening?
Chair Martz, no one has signed up prior to the meeting, and we have no virtual attendees at this time.
What? As a reminder, written comments can be submitted at any time to citycouncil@isiquawoa.gov. Next up, have approval of minutes, the minutes from January 27th, 2024 meeting. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes from January.
Councilmember Joe moved, Councilmember De Michelle seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Abstention, the motion carries. This, I know how to do. First up on the agenda this evening, ID 1569 Credit Card Processing Fees Cost Recovery with Jennifer Raine, Deputy Finance Director. Welcome.
So yeah, Jennifer Raine, the Deputy Finance Director with the city. And I'm here tonight to talk about ID 1569, which raised the question of how credit card and other online transaction processing fees are accounted for. So.
I can sing some show tunes while we wait. Little known fact, I've done weddings. I am a wedding. Yeah. I am. Hi. Well, he must have done a good job. Sea Shant. Those sailing. Are we, are we good? Excellent.
So yeah, going to the next slide. So our purpose here tonight is to provide relevant background information on current credit card systems and their fees, provide a cost analysis, as well as some impacts to finances in the community for this committee to consider in the development of a credit card processing fee cost recovery policy. So tonight, with that, the administration seeks direction from on the city's approach to a credit card processing fees. Should the city, one, continue current practices of a mixed approach to fees, or require all customers using online payment services for credit cards or e-check options to pay the fees in addition to related charges? So to help provide clarity to the current credit card systems the city provides to customers, we have organized them into two categories of credit card payment methods. The first one is point-of-sale methods. Those are managed and maintained by the city. And we also have third-party managed payment methods, and these are managed and maintained by city vendors. So we'll start by reviewing our point-of-sale systems. So here we have three online public-facing portals that are used to process online payments for customers for services to the city. The transaction rates in the credit card industry vary widely based on a number of variables that are a little too robust to fit into this presentation. So we did provide you the ranges of those fees that apply to the various card types that are used out in the industry. And then also, who we believe is paying those credit card fees at this time. So at this time, we can only confirm that utility billing rates have included a credit card cost, fee, cost recovery component in the rates that we charge to customers. At this time, we haven't researched enough to figure out if the fees for parks and recreation services, as well as community planning and development, also include a cost recovery component into the fees for those services. And then moving to our second kind of category of payment systems. So the city partners with Washington State and other vendors who manage public-facing online applications, where customers can use electronic payment methods for specific payments. These methods do not produce a transaction fee cost to the city and are instead passed on to the customer at the time of the transaction. I just wanted to include them so that you guys can consider other options that have online. So after reviewing this information, we can narrow the focus of the following options to the point-of-sale systems for parks and recreation services, community planning and development, as well as utility billing. In a line with our purpose stated earlier tonight of seeking this committee's opinion on the development of a credit card costs or processing fee cost recovery policy, we would like to present the following options to consider. Continue the current practices where some costs for credit card processing fees are transparent to customers, some are baked into the rates for service, and some may be absorbed by the city, or require all customers using online payment services for credit cards or e-checks to pay the fees in addition to their related charges, or return to the SSP committee with more information drafting a credit card service fee policy. As you consider these options, we wanted to make you aware of some community impacts, specifically to option two stated above. With that consideration, there's a slight increase to the costs of overall services to the customer of anywhere between 1% to 4%. And then also, it may influence customers' alternative payment method choices, so maybe not being encouraged to use an online payment portal or credit card to pay their fees to the city, and then instead using a cash or check payment. So here we have included an analysis of some historical costs for credit card processing fees as a percent of sales. So just starting with, you know, 2021 is our kind of baseline to show these costs over time. You can see that the average processing fees for credit cards was 2.48% across all the services we offered online or credit card payments to. Jumping up to 2022 with that analysis, you can see that they remained affect, you know, essentially the same percentage of sales for our credit card fees. However, you know, the number of sales and overall fees did increase for both of them, but it was pretty consistent with that percentage of fees to sales collected. And then looking at 2023, this was, you know, a year where we started in September of 23, we started offering online bill payment for utility billing. So you start seeing where we're collecting sales revenue, where credit card fees are associated with those. This only includes four months of data, and then, of course, is a new product that's being introduced to the public. So it's not fully representative of exactly how much those fees could be in the future. However, it does give us, you know, a 1.53% credit card fees as associated with those sales that are coming through that platform. And then jumping over to 2024, again, it's, you know, incomplete data that goes through the end of February of sales and the credit card fees associated with it, but you can see that it is appearing, you know, consistent and on track with past historical data that we got presented there. And then I definitely wanted to note that, you know, utility billing does reflect a lower, you know, average cost of sales or of processing for transaction fees as a percentage of sales. And we believe this is because there's, you know, an e-check option where a flat rate is assigned for each transaction rather than a percent of sales, which is something that's associated with credit card transaction. So yeah, this is something that we'll continue to monitor as, you know, increased activity happens on utility access and more customers are registering and also using those services online. And then, you know, we hope to keep that year-over-year data so that we monitor it and make sure that any cost recovery component to rates is also including that cost as it goes on over time. And then we also want to make sure that we watch the bottom dollar. It does reflect, you know, $21,500, $500, just in two months of service. However, more activity, that bottom line will definitely increase, even if the percent of sales stays consistent. But everything right now that we're seeing, you know, 1.53% in '23, and then 1.65% in '24, those are pretty consistent as it grows over time. With that, you know, pending direction from this council, we would plan to return to the committee in June later this summer with additional information and a draft policy, as well as if it's decided to pass along processing fees directly to customers, it will require, you know, some research and collaboration with our vendors and software providers to make those changes. A timeframe to implement those changes is unknown at this time, and a little bit dependent on staff's involvement, as well as timelines with the vendors to plan those out. So with that, I, you know, thank you for this consideration, and would love to open it up for questions.
Councilmember De Michelle.
Thank you. So looking at the, that last slide that you showed, you know, 147,000, 150,000 is, you know, could be used for a lot of things if we were decided to capture the processing fees. However, it occurred to me that we, the city probably also gets a benefit from using, you know, we don't have to manually enter data. The transactions, I'm familiar most with PayPal, the transactions go directly to the bank. You know, we can download things from the bank and enter those in, and so it saves a lot of time for staff. And I don't know if we could capture this at all, but is there any way that we could know whether or not the savings that we get from these transactions? Would it could, I guess my question is, could it be a wash between the savings that we might realize from using credit card transactions and the service fees that we're paying? You get what I'm saying?
Yeah, absolutely. And at this time, I'm not, I'd have to, you know, kind of sit down and think through it a little bit more to come up with, you know, a true analysis between the cost savings and the, you know, the reward benefit kind of thing. But I, there is, it's definitely to say that, you know, it does make payments, you know, show up in the bank instantaneously. There's less occurrence of non-sufficient funds for checks that don't clear or anything like that. So the money is more instant, a little bit more secure in that way, as well as, you know, the processing does get easier on staff's side of being able to pull down, you know, big files of data that can be imported in and applied to payments and everything that goes along with it, rather than individually keying in each item for a check or a cash payment that needs to be reconciled at the bank and everything. So definitely a lot of benefit to providing online services and credit card services that, you know, at this moment, I couldn't quantify. But, you know, if that's something that the committee would like to see in the future, it's something we can explore and definitely put into, you know, better words or a picture once we have a.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's kind of an interesting question, and I, I don't want it to be this really burdensome research project at all, but if we, for example, if we did charge, start charging customers for the processing fees, we know that a certain percentage of them will start writing checks again, and then we'll need the staff to process those checks. We don't know what percentage that would be. I mean, we'd be guessing at all of this, but it just occurred to me that, I mean, there's a reason why the city decided to go to credit cards. And so I think Councilmember or Council President Walsh has raised some really good questions, but I think we, I would agree with the option number three about, I think we need a little bit more information to know that we're not trading one set of fees or another set of expenses when it comes to personnel. So that's, that's just my questions, sort of. Was that a sort of a question?
Sure. I'm just wondering what option three is, because I only see options one and two.
Well, on that last slide, they had wait, wait, and they come back with more.
I'm sorry, now I see it. I was looking at the, sorry, I was looking at the.
Yeah, it wasn't on the, yeah, it wasn't on the first slide, it was on the last slide.
Councilmember Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for that presentation tonight. I can see that it was quite a bit of labor to put all the facts and numbers together, so thank you for doing that. Do we have a clear rule at all in terms of, the materials say we charge some of the fees in some circumstances and some we don't. Is there a clear rule, or is it just based on the provider of the credit card system?
So at this time, I mean, I believe usually it's when you implement a new system, you choose one path or the other. You either absorb the fees, you know, and the fees are not passed on to the customer, in which they, you know, total the fees up throughout the month and then send you a bill, you pay the transaction processor for those fees. Or you set it up where, you know, the charge goes through, and then at the bottom of that charge, it also adds on whatever percentage that is determined by the, either the software provider or the city, the customer there in that relationship. So there's, there's no, you know, one right answer or can't or can't do it one way or the other, so it's entirely up to the city how we want to do that. If, definitely, there's nothing written down right now, and I think that's what sparked the need and the question for a policy in general, and also to establish some consistency across all the services to make sure that it's applied the way the city wants it, without, without question, if a service provider changes it.
Okay. If we were to look into the history of how the systems were set up, would we find that perhaps the decision to do fees or to not do fees that get charged to the customer were made based on, you know, kind of best practices that a department head or director had seen over time and kind of knew that this was the best situation for the type of transactions that were occurring with the particular department?
Let me take a stab. You know, we've done the best research we can on sort of the history of how the fees were or were not passed along. I'm convinced that there was not, what you've described did not occur. You know, each of the, of the systems that you see listed here are provided by a third-party vendor. The payment processing is also provided through that third-party vendor, either directly or indirectly through a vendor of their choice. So our flexibility on these costs are certainly in these three large buckets very limited. Again, I think Council President Walsh has done a great service to bring this as something that certainly should be looked at, especially if you look at the utility billing costs associated with that. You know, we're on track, there could be more than $100,000 in fees for the utility billing alone in 2024. So my experience is the communities are all over the map on how they do this. Either they pass it all along, they don't pass any of it along, they decide there's a particular percentage, maybe they split it. If it's a park fee, they may eat it versus a developer fee, which they then pass along. So I think there are different community standards in different places, but I, from the administration's standpoint, this is ripe to tackle, and we would hope that the council would work with us to come up with a plan to recruit at least some of these costs moving forward, and then have a policy going forward if we were to add other processing.
So will the administration, if we pick number three, come back with some policy options for us to say that in the particular instance where parents are signing up kids for parks and rec programs, for instance, it's one set of rules as opposed to permit fees on another side, it'd be another set of rules, will be that detailed that you'll come back to us with, or is it more of, we're going to just go down the list and pick them for the city?
Well, we were looking for some general thoughts from the committee this evening. You know, I think that there is no community standard in Isiqua, and so we're curious to hear what you think the community standard should be. Again, my experience, the committees handle this all different ways, so there is no one right way to do this. But, you know, certainly looking at the numbers, as your city administrator, the utility billing charges really get my attention. The others are perhaps, minimus is not the right word, but they're certainly not as significant as those utility billing costs. And quite honestly, people are going to continue more and more to use electronic systems. Hey, I don't know that we have statistics on paper checks, but certainly those numbers are dropping significantly. We still have, I think, a core group of folks who make it their, their exercise to come to City Hall, pause it a check. We added a bin, for example, there's a mailbox outside the door, and you would be surprised how disappointed so many people were that they didn't get to make that last walk up the stairs and say hello to Heidi and ask how her family is and all that. So, you know, this is, it's an interesting topic, bill payment, but we're looking for the committee's direction this evening.
Great, thank you for that information and answer. I'll look forward to the debate with my colleagues.
So to be clear, amongst these three options, does the administration have a recommendation?
We are looking for some feedback first this evening. I think that it would be, once we get your feedback, that we would come with a more specific policy. But again, our search of legislative history, we could not find any discussion by the council on this topic. And so rather than presuppose that, we wanted to get some feedback. But I will say, you know, certainly some cost recruitment, either directly or indirectly, makes sense, just a matter of.
Would brighten your day.
Excuse me?
Would brighten your day.
Given the, given the orders of magnitude, that's at least one, one and a half FTE that we're talking about in the total cost, so I think makes sense to try to deal with that.
Thank you for that clarification. Before we deliberate, we have reached the point where I will ask again if there is any public comment on this particular issue before we deliberate. Clerk, is there any indication of public comment?
There is none, Chair Martz.
There is none. All right, let's talk about this. I will lead off and say that since the Reagan administration, I've written, I don't know, seven checks, maybe eight, something like that, total, total number of checks. I just never been a check. I've always been an early adopter on this credit card. What do we think?
Well, I write about six checks a month, if that's the question.
There wasn't, I was just bragging about not writing checks.
Okay, all right. I still write checks to places, but I do use credit cards quite a bit, too, and it is convenient. My opinion, as we look at this, would be to go to some recruitment that the city would look at, but I'm in favor of putting a cap of no more than 2%, just as a number so that our citizens can understand that we're doing recruitment across the board at 2% to recover some of our costs, but also take part of the burden as well. And we can reevaluate the 2% amount if those credit card fees go up in the future, but that was my inclination as I was reviewing the material today.
So, so cost recovery up to 2%?
Up to 2%. So on the bottom one for parks and rec, it's 1.92, so that would stay at 1.92. When it hits two, we cap it at two, and we take on some of the burden as a city for those costs going up, but the, it gives our departments some type of, a little bit of leverage when they're looking at fees, too. They can say, we're capped at 2%, you're going to 3.5, we're going to be looking for someone else if you're too high. And it gives our city some ability to go ahead and negotiate and try to keep those fees a little bit lower as an added benefit.
Councilmember De Michelle? Sorry, Deputy Council President De Michelle.
Thank you. I, yes, I definitely think that we should be looking at how to recoup these costs. And, yeah, that was a good analogy, that it's a half of an FTE. It's, I was looking at those and thinking, we could, what can we pay for with that $150,000 from last year? So, so, and other organizations I know are certainly going to this. In my way of thinking, this is a business expense, and so I, you know, I know we need to be transparent with the public, but I'm just wondering why we don't fold it, I mean, we don't break out all the other business expenses for the charges that we make. I'm not sure why we should focus in on this and not just include it in the bill as part of the business expenses that we charge. So, well, wait for me to finish, please. So, so that would be, you know, that's how I would approach it. I just think it's another business expense, and it will drive up the charge that we do a little bit, but we need to recover it. Thanks.
Sorry, I thought you were asking the question at that point.
No, I was making a statement.
Got it. I mean, I could see if someone was more comfortable with checks than I, that they could save themselves 2% by writing a check, which on a sizable enough bill, if we just fold it in, then everybody just has to pay the higher, regardless.
Yep.
So that, I mean, that would be one argument. I guess my, my thing on this is I would like us to do cost recovery almost everywhere, but there's a couple of areas in particular where I think we might want to have some different policy. I believe in the past, we have been careful about court fees for folks who are in here, you know, if they have fees associated with, you know, getting out of jail or that sort of thing, where it's a, it's not somebody coming to us for services, but somebody that we're reaching out and touching. I think there might be other areas where we, where there's a social services argument to waive the 2%. And I don't know, I don't know where all it is, that's the only one I can think of off the top of my head, but it's possible that there are other areas where we would want to have that policy, just because the nature of the fees are different. You know, we tend to think in terms of utility billing and things like that, but there's other things where people are having a very bad day, and it seems a shame to also say, by the way, here's also 2% on top of everything else. Councilmember Joe?
Yeah, I certainly agree with that sentiment. Unfortunately. Unfortunately, it looks like, if I'm reading this right, that court fees are a third-party payment, and they put 150 on the transaction for an E-check and 5% on web rate, 7% on phone rate. And I don't think we have, we don't have control of that amount necessarily. We could negotiate potentially with the state managed system to, to get it down, but I would love to have some of the defendants that come to the court get a little bit of a break, but I, I don't think that's one of the, the ones that we're considering under the three in terms of utilities, parks, and community planning and development, I think, if I'm, if I'm reading it right.
Are we only considering those three areas or are those three areas the, the sample areas that we had for the purposes of the conversation?
So those three areas are the ones that the city has control over who, if we absorb the fee or pass the fee on to the customer. The, the third-party managed ones, like Russell Joe said, is, they're, they're managed by someone else and that, that price is dictated by those, those owners, not the city.
Good, good point. All right, well, we certainly have other specific programs for people that are indigent with some of our utilities, right? So, you know, broadly speaking, we address the social services side of some of our fees, maybe the 2% in the noise compared to those other programs. So I guess in these three areas, I, I can't see an obvious reason to be different. So I guess all three of them go to try to do cost recovery, I guess is where I hit that. Are we broadly speaking in agreement on this?
Mr. Chairman? If I may, you know, the, the, the 2% is a little problematic when you look at the numbers, in that, for example, then we, there is no, we get 1.65%. So you're saying that we would be able to, we would charge the 1.65%. It would just be only those that are above the 2, correct? So for example...
That was Councilmember Joe's suggestion, I believe.
Okay.
Just to cap at 2.
Does that cause administrative problems?
I just want to, I just want to be, want to be clear as we leave this item this evening.
Sure. If, if that will cause too much of a math problem or...
No, 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 no.
A transaction problem, we also need to know about that because adding that, that friction or that cost is counter to what I, what I think we're trying to do tonight. And if, if full cost recovery comes back as the better method for us, we certainly would want to know that too.
Again, I just want to make sure we leave the item that we're all clear on what, what you're saying. So when you look at the, the numbers for '24, so that would be, you know, passing on 0.42%, 0.86%. So we would not, we would pass on up to 2. So we're eating 0.42%, 0.86% and covering the whole 1.65%. Next question then is, you wish to roll this into the fee so there's not a separate line item for service charge? Because I think that gets awfully complicated.
Okay. Well, that was what I was thinking, is that, yeah, we roll it into all of the other business expenses we have. I mean, there, there must be rationale for why we're charging this and cost this to, I don't know, provide water or put in pipes or whatever. And, oh, and by the way, it's a business expense that we have that, we have this 2.7 charge for credit card fees. And we just roll it in, into the overhead that is part of the fee that we charge for these services. So that would be my preference.
Okay.
I don't know why we would tell the public, break it out and say, oh, by the way, are you paying 2% for credit card charges when that's just part of the overhead that we, that we have? That's, that's just the way I see it, so.
And I'm just looking to make sure that, you know, as we go back and try to come up with them with a policy for this, because we would need to then have an annual process for all these particular fees in addition to whatever the service is, then to look and see as the, I imagine these percentages change, looks like they've changed annually.
Yes, absolutely.
So, so, again, just, I want to make sure we're just clear. So is it, Mr. Chairman, the committee's desire then that we would look at a policy that would roll this in so that there is not a line?
Well, I'm eager to hear what Councilmember Joe has to say on that.
Yeah, I proposed a 2% cap that the credit card user would pay, however, it sounds more complicated from an administrative point of view and a staff point of view, that we would perhaps need to hire half an FTE because we're doing all of this and go counter to what we, what we intend to do. So I, I think my two colleagues are saying they want to do full cost recovery for the amounts that are stated in, in the agenda bill, and if that's the will of the committee, I'm certainly willing to go along with that.
Great. Yeah, I think, I think it would be simpler. I think to Councilmember De Michelle, it's just the cost of doing business and, but I think what I would ask is that we review this upon occasion, upon occasion being, I don't know, every couple of years, to see if costs, if, you know, I would hate to see, you know, these costs seem to be going down over time and huzzah for that, but, you know, if Ticketmaster took over this thing and all of a sudden it was a higher number, that would be a public policy issue. Is that, is that, we've got head nods?
Okay, so we're rolling it into the fees.
Correct.
So what we'll have to do then is we will have to estimate what we think the cost is at the beginning of the year before we get the actuals. So I think we would do that with an eye toward recovering more than covering less. And again, it's a volume thing. I think clearly the utility billing piece is, eclipses the others by quite a bit. So, okay.
All right.
That make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Very good. Thank you.
So you guys have everything you needed on this one? Sounds like it. Thank you to my fellow councilmembers on that one. And with that, we will move on to ID 1583. This is comprehensive plan update for the draft parks, recreation, trails, and open space element of that comp plan. And we have Valerie Porter, Associate Planner, with us this evening.
Hello, my name is Valerie Porter, Associate Planner with the Community Planning and Development Department, and I'm here to talk to you about the Parks Recreation Trails and Open Space Element, also called the Parks Element. That's part of the comprehensive plan update. So the purpose of tonight's meeting is just to seek input from the community on the Parks Element update. So the administration is posing two questions. The first one is, does the community have any feedback on the proposed updates? And the second is, are there any topics not being addressed in the proposed goals or policies? So just a little bit of background, in 1990, the state required all fast-growing cities and counties to develop their own comprehensive plans that would address population sprawl and just the overall quality of life in Washington. The comprehensive plans are required to address 14 goals, which Issaquah addresses through these 10 goals which are listed here. The comprehensive plan provides the framework for functional plans, so it's important that these documents are in, in alignment. The parks has a functional plan that's called the Park System Plan Update, which was last updated in 2009. And so as part of the periodic plan update, park staff, in coordination with the Parks Board, examined the adopted element, and they looked at all of the goals and policies, and they concluded that the existing goals and policies are still appropriate and they're not proposing any changes to those. But they did feel that some of the goals that are listed here on the slide should be As much, after much discussion, park staff and the Parks Board created nine new policies that would address, that would be added to the existing goals and policies currently in place. And they would address coordination with regional partners and the tribes. They would also include adding art and cultural to park system, highlighting the urban forest management plan, as well as touching on protecting heritage trees. I have the nine policies here, so I'm not going to go into all of them, but in case we want to discuss them later, they're here. And just next steps. So just recently, the docket was approved, and so the comprehensive plan will be compiled and then presented to the Planning Policy Commission in quarter three, and then they will present a recommendation to the council, and then in quarter four, the comprehensive plan will go to council for adoption. Again, these are the two questions that staff asked for the committee, and at this time, I'll take questions.
Councilmember Joe?
Thank you. Ms. Porter, when you say the docket on the previous slide, could you provide a little bit of background? Is that just the small property changes that are done on a yearly basis? Or is that those property changes plus the proposed docket for the Parks Element? Or is it some other combination thereof or something different?
It's the docket, I believe, that was proved maybe yesterday, and it's basically addressing all of the work that would be handled by staff. So it's all of the elements as the, in the comp plan, as well as the proposed rezone, and I think it also addresses population growth.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. And could you touch on the, the way that we are in our parks matrix and the Parks Element, the ways that we're trying to reach out to our Native Americans or indigenous tribes in this area in some of the policies?
At this time, I'd like to ask park staff to help out.
Hi, Robyn Spear, Park Planning and Development Manager. I'm happy to answer that question, Councilmember Joe. We have started outreach and doing some outreach to the indigenous tribes. We're getting great feedback, and we understand that they definitely want to be a part of the process, or at least asked to be a part of the process or are asked on specific projects to be involved with. So we're starting that, that outreach and starting to develop some standards of how we want to do that outreach, how they would like to do that outreach, and how they would like to be involved in the planning process. But not only the planning process, but also the maintenance and the management after the parks are developed too.
Great, thank you for that information. Could you touch on the, the public outreach that you've done so far with the small subgroups that you got together and had questions with and, and some of the feedback you received from those groups?
Sure, I think we, I believe, and Jeff could, correct me if I'm wrong, we started off with focus groups, and I believe there were three focus groups, all three focus groups altogether. The next thing we did was a public survey. So we had that survey go out. We've had a community workshops, we've had workshops with our consultants, and several one-on-ones just within the community. Our next step is actually, we're going to be doing another community workshop and mapping session.
My last question is concerning the, the youth in our community. They're the ones that consume the parks the most and are the ones that are going to be left with the parks after we have departed. Was there a, how would you measure the, the level of interest or activity or feedback that you got from our youth community?
And, and that's one of the most challenging groups to get feedback from, but we do realize that they're, they're utilizing the parks pretty frequently and one of the most popular users of the parks. So we did definitely do some outreach to the high schools, at the garage also, did a couple one-on-ones there. We do have a meeting next week with the teens at the garage, so that, that's excellent. And during our workshop we just had last week, we had a few of the teenagers come in also. But yeah, it is, it is challenging, so if you have any ideas of any more outreach we could do, that'd be great.
Thank you. I will give the floor back to my colleagues.
Councilmember De Michelle?
Deputy Council President De Michelle?
Okay. I have, I have a couple questions. First off, on proposed policies H9 and H10, metrics, which get me very happy, what would be the proposed timeline for having some of that data and, and coming back and, and being able to actually talk about near-term and long-term project success and levels of service, all that good stuff?
Yeah, well, we're looking at at least one year to five year, once a project is completed and once we start seeing what users are utilizing the park again. It takes kind of seasonal cycles to see what people are doing and how they're using the parks, but I'm anticipating one year. And again, it depends on the size of the park also. Neighborhood park kind of acts a little bit differently, and the people use those parks a little bit differently than our community park.
Okay, thank you. And then the other question I had is on proposed policy H4, measure and consider the economic benefits the park system provides or could provide, okay, I'm with you so far, while balancing residential use with regional visitors. What does, what does the second half of that sentence?
The while balancing residential use with regional visitors? Well, our main focus and our primary focus is going to be on serving the community. That's what the parks are designed for, that's our biggest user group will be the community. We do recognize that this is a hub for regional visitors. You know, the trails are very attractive, the outdoor recreation very attractive, the open spaces very attractive, but really, we want to make sure that we're serving the community first and foremost.
So does, I guess, does that mean teasing out the difference between the, the benefit to their residential community with the benefit to regional users? Is that what that means then?
Mm-hmm. And I think we realize that, that, and Jeff, if you want to expand on this a little bit more, actually.
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. Yes, that's a differentiation. As we talked with the park board, it's understanding there is a limited capacity of our park system. And so as we look at economic benefits, let's not think it's all about visitation. We're really primarily trying to build a system that supports our residents.
Okay.
But, but even in serving our residents, there's economic benefit that's happening within the system.
Yeah, understood. All right. That's, that's good. I, I was having lunch with friends in Bellevue this, on Sunday, and they had just moved to Bellevue from Seattle, and they were talking about, well, we're, we're going to go over, there's a, there's a pool down in the, in Issaquah Valley. I said, yes, there is, bone pool, as a matter of fact. And they were excited about bringing their kids down there. So I, I got to see that regional, that regional enthusiasm up, up close and personal this very weekend. I do not see other questions right now, so I think that we're, don't have other, are there, are these topics, are there, are there topics not being addressed? I guess, no?
Mr. Chairman, do we want to go to public comment before discussion?
Well, sure. Is there any indication of public comment?
There is not, Chair Martz.
There we go. Thank you so much for the rigor on that, helping me be rigorous.
I think the, the way the park element is, is going forward is, is great. I love the focus on indigenous people that is going on, and I appreciate that there's a recognition and a measurement of the economic benefit of parks when people look at, you know, am I going to live in Bellevue or am I going to live in Issaquah? They are looking at our park system pretty closely and whether it provides opportunities for them to get out and do the things that they want to do, and they factor that into their decision to rent or potentially purchase a home here. So I think that's a fantastic way to look at it. The topics that are being addressed and proposed goals seem spot on to me, and, and I don't have any criticisms or suggestions for changing any of them.
Thank you. Deputy Council President?
Thanks. I also don't have any additions. Just a general comment on these updates to the comprehensive plan, and I don't know who came up with this, but that grid that we're presented with, with all the changes, I just have to say thank you. It's so easy to read through and see where it's been changed, why it's been changed and so forth. So just want to express appreciation for that format. Like Councilmember Joe, I'm very, very pleased to see the inclusion of the tribes into the planning and maintenance of parks, and, and also very pleased to see the addition of the arts element. That's just one of my art things, so, but I'm so glad to see that the arts are being infused into all of the different elements in the comprehensive plan, so I appreciate that. But like the Parks Board, I have no additions. Thank you. Thank you.
And I don't have anything to add either. So does the administration have everything that they were looking for from us this evening?
We do, thank you.
All right. Thank you for your presentation. Last, but certainly not least, we have ID 1612 City Hall Northwest Surplus Report. And this is with Jeanne Justice, Administrative Services Manager.
Just like to say that Issaquah technology is wonderful. Good evening, committee members. Jeanne Justice, I'm the Administrative Services Manager in purge of facilities. And I am here tonight to talk with you about the City Hall Northwest Surplus Report and review our surplus evaluation and ask you for some input on our recommendations for surplus and disposition of the property. Specifically, we are looking for some direction in terms of is there support for the administration's recommendation to surplus the property? If you have any significant concerns before we proceed to a public hearing and some specific feedback about using an appraisal for fair market value, how we decide to dispose of the property, and also any special covenants or restrictions on that purchase and sale agreement. A little bit of background, council approved the surplus real property policy back in fall of 2022. There are some specific criteria that need to be evaluated as part of that. It can be initiated either by council or staff. In this particular case, it was initiated by staff and affirmed by council last summer in July of '23. Administration provides a staff report, which we're here tonight to review. Then we proceed to a public hearing if it's over 50, if the property is valued at over $50,000. The council has the opportunity to review and make a determination and then adopt resolution. A couple of guiding principles from the surplus policy, including making sure that we are being good stewards of our municipal assets, that we are not holding properties that don't have a municipal use, that we sell them at fair market value if we do surplus them, and that we use those to finance other capital assets from the funds that originally acquired asset, in which case this is the general fund. Once any capital needs have been satisfied, you can use it for other things. The evaluation criteria that we look at include kind of the relevance, use and condition of the property, an analysis of public benefit, and consideration of other city uses for that particular piece of property. City Hall Northwest is shaded in gray, located just northeast of I-90 and SR-900 or 17th Street. It is approximately 1.2 acres. It was a two-story building of about 24,000 square feet, constructed in 1983. Couple of photos of the exterior of the current building. When we look at the criteria of relevance, use and condition, this parcel is part of the central Issaquah area, urban growth and development hub for downtown Issaquah. It was purchased for administrative purposes for the city in 1990. In 2020, most of the staff were moved out due to the pandemic conditions, remote work, and the cost of upkeeping the building. So essentially, the building is 40 years old and most of the things in it were designed to last about 20 years. The current condition is poor. It has both functional and infrastructure deficiencies that have been identified in reports by consultants over the past several years. The current cost to operate and maintain the building as it is is about $60,000 to $85,000 a year, plus staff time and materials. And the identified capital reinvestment costs from those consultant reports are about $2.5 million in the near term, about $9 million in the longer term. And those capital costs are really about replacing assets that are at the end of their lives. It's not about a functional reconstruction of the building. When we look at public benefit and restrictions, so the building is not being used for a lot, so it doesn't really offer a lot of public benefit. It's not currently generating any revenue. It does have the potential for some annual tax revenue, depending on what it is used for in the future. And there are no historic structures or landmarks on the property. The zoning is currently community facilities, which does restrict the types of activities that can take place there. So zoning and land use changes would be needed to match the surrounding central Issaquah zoning and land use to get the highest and best use from this property. Separately, we have brought forward rezone application as well as a land use amendment as part of the comprehensive plan amendments for your consideration. So other city uses, when we've talked with staff and administration, the, really the only use of the property was identified was for administrative staff uses. As we've been discussing, we need to relocate administrative staff out of the police building as part of our 2022 space needs assessment. So all of the relocation options for city administrative staff are, really require some significant funding. So sale of this particular property in a very central Issaquah location could provide a significant amount of revenue, a one-time funding for those types of needs, as well as ongoing general fund revenue. Potentially also could support other city facilities needs, which facility condition assessment estimated about $750,000 a year in city facility needs. We did look at utilizing the existing property. The current condition, the current building condition, not really supportive of city staff in providing city services. So more of a reconstruction would be the preferred option if you're going to rebuild that property. But as we looked at, you know, the goals from the 2022 space needs assessment, where we have accessibility, where we have adjacency to other public services, where people like to meet, which the public said was, community said was near green spaces, this location doesn't really check all the boxes. The other option would be that the property could be transferred or surplused or sold to another agency or nonprofit. So given all of that criteria and evaluation, administration is recommending that we consider the property for surplus, that council approves the rezone application and comprehensive plan amendment that are underway in separate processes to change the zoning and land use, that we dispose of the property, that we determine fair market value via appraisal after the rezone and land use changes are made, that we dispose of it by listing it on MLS and negotiating a purchase and sale agreement, and that we have two special conditions for the disposition. One, that we use the profits to support other city facility needs. And two, that we transfer ownership of a two-inch sewer forced main that only serves this particular parcel as part of that purchase and sale agreement. The options for your consideration are to provide some minor changes and approve the surplus determination for the public hearing and full council consideration, or to instruct staff, maybe, to make substantial changes and come back to you at committee. Our recommendation is to approve the surplus recommendation and move forward with the public hearing and city council for full consideration on April 15. And how that fits into the overall schedule of everything was the public hearing and council consideration would be on April 15. The council would take full action on surplus resolution on May 6. The council rezone action is currently scheduled for June 20. And comprehensive plan update should be done before the end of Q3, in which case, in which point we would proceed with the appraisal and then disposition of the property, probably end of the year, early next year. So specifically, we're asking for some direction about support for the recommendation of surplus, any concerns you might have prior to a public hearing and feedback on the appraisal, the purchase and sale, and the special covenant. That's all I have.
Thank you. I will ask if any members of the public are here to be interested in commenting on this item.
Chair Martz, would you like to do Q and A first? Or do you want to do?
You know.
Whatever the chair wants.
Yes, yes, I would like to do Q and A first. Do we have any questions? Deputy Council President.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Martz. So a simple, I'm sorry, but just to make sure that we're clear on everything, you know, we keep talking about property. Do we own the building and the land?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're, we're on the same page there. And then we're being asked if there should be any special covenants? And speak slowly and draw pictures. What is, you know, what are we talking about when we're talking about covenants? And what would, what would even be an example? I really do not understand that part of the, of the question.
Are there any conditions that you want to place upon the sale?
So that would be like the two conditions that you just showed us. So those would be covenants? Okay. All right. Thank you for that clarification. Like, what? What are we talking about? Okay. Thank you. I think those are the only two questions I have, although if I think of some more, maybe come back to me.
Councilmember Joe.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. The question I had, if you could just fill out the picture a little bit in terms of the zoning that could potentially be put on that piece of property, has that been discussed? And if it has, can you kind of give me some of the, the options from a 50,000-foot level, so to speak?
The rezone that we, so right now it's community facilities, so you can only do community facility type things. The zoning of the surrounding area is central Issaquah zoning, which allows for multi-use collar buildings, that type of thing. So that is what we have requested, is we've just requested in the, the rezone application for it to go back to the same zoning as the area all around it.
Okay. Just visually, could it be a four-over-one type shopping facility? For instance, is that permissible in that area where you had two or three buildings that are four floors over one floor of retail, which was kind of brought up by Councilmember Ray last night? And if you don't know, because you're not a planner, we'll, we'll certainly defer that question and that may be unfair at this time.
I would say I believe so, but I am not a planner and I can check.
Okay. I was asked the question more for Councilmember Ray's benefit than, than anything else. I appreciate your stab at it and we won't hold you to that answer necessarily. Okay, those are the questions that I had, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Certainly. And I don't, I don't have any questions. So now I will ask, clerk, whether there's any indication that any members of the public wish to speak on this issue?
Chair Martz, we have no members of the public in attendance, either in person or virtually.
Thank you very much. I guess now we can deliberate on this. Councilmember Joe.
Thank you. I appreciate all the hard work that was done before we could even consider the options here. I know that the clerk's department did just hours and hours of work to get all the documents scanned so that we could actually move them out of that facility and prepare to get to this point. And I want to pass on the thanks to, to the clerk's office for getting that done. I, looking over this, I certainly approve the surplus determination would be my, my hope tonight and go on to the public hearing so we can hear comments from the rest of the community if there is some hidden affinity for the building that we may not know about or someone just loves the building so much they want to, want us to consider keeping it in some way, shape or form. I think that's an important element to consider. I think it's important that it have the designation that is the same as that whole entire area for zoning consistency. And I look forward to selling the building potentially in the future and then seeing its highest and best use for that property for the development of the city. Thank you.
Councilmember, Deputy Council President DeMichele.
It is a mouthful. Yes, I support the recommendation to surplus the building. It certainly needs to be surplus. I think we all, if we've been inside of it, we know that it needs to go. I can't think of any significant concerns. I do think that, yes, we should get an appraisal to assess a fair market value. And I don't have any comment regarding special considerations or covenants or whatever that we should put on it. I'm just going to ask this question. Does it mean that I think it should be included at all in, in any of, but is there, is there a way that we could encourage that piece of land to be used for affordable housing? Or once we put it on the market, is basically we're selling it and, oh, okay, I'm getting the nod. So we really can't direct the use of that property if we decide to dispose of it, right?
At this point, Deputy Council President, the administration's recommending that this be market value sale.
Okay.
Because as we look at other needs, this is a funding source for some of the other issues and projects we'd like to address.
Okay, that's a point well taken. All right. I won't pursue that line of questioning anymore. All right, thank you. And yeah, I, I think it's well past time that we surplus this building.
So yes, yes, we should. I, I would have loved to, you know, we've been talking about this for some time, so I'm eager to see us divest ourselves of it. Significant concerns to address? No. Of course, we should figure out what fair market value is. I just think it should be both method of disposition and special covenants, restrictions, easements. I just think we should be trying to maximize the breadth and scope of potential buyers on the property. It's a really interesting property, quite close to the freeway, but it's also, there could be traffic in that area. So it's a, it's an interesting location, but I would love to see what somebody chooses to do with that property. And I would like to minimize the extent to which we circumscribe how that gets used beyond, beyond the code that we already have for public safety and like good stuff. Any other thoughts? Nope. Does the administration have what they are looking for from us? Thank you. Thank you for the presentation this evening. Anything from the committee before we break? All right. Then with that, we are adjourned. Thank you so much to city staff for presenting today and having all this good information for us. And for those of you at home who've been following along, thank you.